I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
Of the United States.
Of the United States of America.
States of America.
And to the republic.
To the republic.
Republic.
Which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Invisible.
With liberty.
With liberty.
Justice.
Justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Hey, Councilman Skorinji.
Present.
Councilwoman Resonetti.
Present.
Councilwoman Riley.
Present.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
Councilman Strong.
Present.
And President Scanlon.
Present.
Okay, that's all seven here.
Okay, now we're gonna vote for the city council officers. I'll take nominations for city council president for the year 2021.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a nomination.
Go ahead, Councilman Strong.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to nominate our colleague, Councilwoman Sophia Resonetti, for city council president.
Thank you, Councilman Strong. Any other nominations for city council president for year 2021?
Mr. President, I'd like to second the nomination of Councilwoman Sophia Resonetti for council president.
Thank you, Councilman Skorinji. No other nominations for city council president? We will take a vote, please. Roll call, please, Lee.
Okay, for this roll call, I need everyone to state the name of the person that they would like to vote for city council president. So, we'll start with Councilman Skorinji.
Sophia Resonetti.
Thank you. Councilwoman Resonetti.
Sophia Resonetti.
Councilwoman Riley.
Abstention.
Okay. Councilwoman Friedman.
Sophia Resonetti.
Councilman Burns.
Sophia Resonetti.
Councilman Strong.
Sophia Resonetti.
And Councilman Scanlon.
Sophia Resonetti. Is Ken Frank there tonight?
I am, I'm listening. I was gonna ask, Councilwoman Riley, what's the basis for the abstention?
I don't think we got a motion to close the nominations, did we?
Did somebody say, "Call the question"? I mean, it's not a motion.
No, nobody said, "Call the question." Nobody said that. So, we can go back and do that right now. So, Ken, I'll start the whole process over. I'll take nominations for city council president.
I'd like to make a nomination.
Go ahead, Councilman Strong.
Thank you. I would like to nominate our colleague, Councilwoman Sophia Resonetti, for city council president for the year 2021.
Do you have a second on that, please?
I'll second the nomination, Mr. President.
Is there any other nominations for city council president for year 2021?
Yes, I'd like to know if President Scanlon is interested in a second term before I make the nomination.
I am not, no.
Okay. Then I rescind my potential nomination.
Hold on, let's back up here. So, I got a second on Sophia Resonetti as council president, and I hear no other nominations for city council president. Need somebody to call this a question, please.
I'll call the question.
Call for question.
Okay, thank you very much, Lee. Can you do a roll call now, please?
Okay, Councilman Skorinji.
Sophia Resonetti.
Councilwoman Resonetti.
Sophia Resonetti.
Councilwoman Riley.
Sophia Resonetti.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Sophia Resonetti.
Councilman Burns.
Councilwoman Sophia Resonetti.
Councilman Strong.
Sophia Resonetti.
And Councilman Scanlon.
Councilwoman Sophia Resonetti.
That's seven votes for Sophia Resonetti for council president.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to congratulate Councilwoman Sophia Resonetti. And Madam President, this is your meeting to run from here. So, please do so.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I look forward to a great year, and I'm truly excited to work with everyone on behalf of the residents and the businesses that we represent. Thank you. Okay, so at this time, I will take any nominations for the position of city council president pro temp.
Madam President, I'd like to nominate Councilman Tom Scanlon for the position of city council president pro temp.
Do you need a second?
I'll second that motion.
Are there any other nominations for president pro temp? Okay. None? I will have a clerk take.
I'll call the question, Madam President.
Thank you. I'll have a clerk take roll call.
Okay. So, again, you'll need to state the name of the person you'd like to vote for. So, Councilman Skorinji.
Tom Scanlon.
Councilwoman Resonetti.
Tom Scanlon.
Councilwoman Riley.
Councilman Tom Scanlon.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Tom Scanlon.
Councilman Burns.
A great Biggant Tony and Tom Scanlon.
Councilman Strong.
Councilman Tom Scanlon.
And Councilman Scanlon.
Tom Scanlon.
Okay, that's seven votes for Tom Scanlon. Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna move on. Does the council majority have a selection for minority leader?
Madam President.
Councilman Strong.
Yes, we've selected Councilman Giovanni Skorinji as our majority leader.
Thank you. And we don't need a roll call for this, right?
Right. We don't need any roll call for that. It's just a simple announcement.
And has the council majority made a selection for minority leader?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Congratulations, first of all. And we have selected Councilwoman Angela Riley to be minority leader.
So, at this point, we're gonna move forward with the city council nominees and appointments. I will announce the committee assignments and appointments for 2021. If you'd like a different assignment, please let me know after the meeting so we can discuss. But for now, these are the 2021 assignments. Finance Committee, Strong's the chair, Scanlon, Burns. Planning and Community Development Committee, Strong is the chair, Skorinji and Friedman. Municipal and Public Affairs Committee, Scanlon is the chair, Strong and Riley. Public Works, Park Center Creation Committee, Scanlon is the chair, Skorinji and Riley. Employees Committee, Skorinji is the chair, Scanlon and Burns. Special Studies, Rules and Procedures Committee, Skorinji is the chair, Strong and Friedman. BLDC, Strong and Burns. Bureau, Strong, Friedman. Joint Switch Board, Riley. COD, Burns. CDAC, Skorinji and Burns. Traffic Board, Scanlon. Also, one quick note, as we take votes throughout the year, I will elect to be the last one for a roll call, in the roll call order. I understand that this has typically been done in the years in past with incoming council presidents, and I'll make those arrangements with our clerk. So, at this point, I guess I would like to make a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting so that we can move on to the work session in a little bit. I don't know what time it is, and we'll be starting back up at 6:00.
Point of question, point of clarification requested.
Sure, go ahead.
Per the city charter, please clarify for me if someone has it in front of them. I was under the impression that CDAC was to be filled by the majority and minority leaders.
Ken, do you wanna chime in here?
I can take a look at that, but no, each council person gets one selection, and then council as a whole selects usually the chairman, and the mayor has three selections. I can double-check it in the morning, but that's my recollection.
Thank you. I look forward to hearing your feedback after.
And so, with that, we will adjourn.
Madam President.
Yes. Councilwoman.
Forgive me. Point of information was the previous question in relation to the makeup of the CDAC or the city council ex officio members? Because your appointments are for the ex officio members, but if I understood Ken correctly, it sounded like he was describing the members of the CDAC. I wasn't sure which one that was, and I apologize.
Right. I think he blended the overall composition, but I was specifically speaking to the ex officio membership.
Yeah, that's what I call it. Thank you.
So, Ken, you'll get some clarification for us?
Okay, are you asking who's ex officio on CDAC?
Councilwoman Riley, were you asking that?
Yes. I don't know.
Is that what you're asking? Who is ex officio on CDAC?
Correct. Is it defined?
Oh, I have no idea. Then I'll have to look that up. I have no idea who's ex officio. I mean, any council member can attend, and they are not voting members.
Thank you. So, you will look that up, Ken. Thank you, appreciate it. And unless there are any other questions, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Motion adjourned, Madam President.
Don't move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we'll go on mute so we don't have to pre-communicate it. And you're welcome to turn your cameras off as well. But we'll start back up at 6:00 PM, okay?
Do we use the same link, forgive me? Right? The same invitation?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure another one wasn't generated. Thank you.
Hi, hi there, Councilwoman resonating. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you.
Will we get an email of that list that we just voted on?
I'm sorry, Angela, can you say that again?
Will we get a list of the committees that we're just voting on?
Yes, absolutely.
I will, I'll email that out tomorrow to everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, this is Councilwoman Friedman, I'm back.
Hello.
Hello.
It's six o'clock.
Okay, are we all here? All right, so it's six o'clock. Welcome to City Council Work Session for Monday, January 4th, 2021, please stand.
Entrance to the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the Republic. Which it stands. One nation, under God. Invisible, with liberty and justice for all. Councilman Skarjic.
Present.
Councilwoman Riley.
Present.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
Ron.
Present.
Councilman Scanlon.
Present.
And President Resonetti.
Present.
That's all seven here.
Okay, do we have Chief Hickelston on the line?
Chief Hickelston, are you there?
Yes, I am. Hello, good evening, congratulations, Councilwoman Resonetti.
Thank you, thank you very much, Happy New Year, I can tell us a little bit about RL 1-0-1, please?
Yes, we have to transfer some money into the overtime line to cover the end of the year costs. Seventy-six thousand dollars total, we're looking for sixty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars out of fire personal services. Those are people who have retired throughout the year, six thousand dollars from fire uniforms, and six thousand dollars from fire equipment.
Do we have any comments?
Yes, Councilman Scanlon, Madam President.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Chief Hickelston, thank you for coming down tonight. So this, this overtime, this is through the end of the year, and again, just remind us, why does overtime occur, please, if you could?
Um, well, it's a lot of different things, one of them is we're, we are down eight positions in the fire department, the retirement, so we haven't filled back in. We've lost a lot of people, we've had a number of positive COVID tests in the fire department, so there've been mandatory quarantining. And just regular vacations, end of the year, people have time coming, vacations, personal leave time. We have people in paramedic school that cause overtime. We have monthly paramedic classes, and then just regular contract requirements, vacations, and personal leave time.
So I anticipate that you'll be coming down another month or two, and it's going to be more overtime, correct? Based on everything you said?
No, I will not. I hope not for the rest of the year, but there's always that possibility later in the year.
Right, thank you very much.
Freeman, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Madam President, hi Chief, how are you? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Um, okay, so I just want to clarify to make sure that I'm understanding correctly, so this, this overtime is, like you said, due to the fact that you are down eight positions, there are lots of people missing for various reasons, and is, is that why the money is available in the Personnel Services? That money would have otherwise been used for, let's say, like regularly, I don't want to say regularly scheduled, but firefighters that would have normally been in those positions that now are not? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, people have retired throughout the year, we've had eight firefighters leave this year, and they left at various times of the year, and we had the whole year budgeted for them. But, so yes, that's what the money's there for.
Any more questions? Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you.
So do we have Mr. Paddock?
Yes, this is for RL number 2102.
Yes.
It's in ordinance, we're looking to amend the 2020 DPW budget, looking to transfer six thousand from our gasoline and diesel to vehicle parts to fund additional parts that are necessary, like for plow blades, cylinders for the sanitation truck, plow pumps, etc.
Comments or questions?
Madam President, I have a comment, please.
Go ahead, Councilman Scanlon.
Commissioner Paddock, I, I gotta commend you on yesterday's snowstorm. Um, I'm not sure, other side of town, my side of town, I drove around, was virtually bare by eleven o'clock last night, so I'm very grateful for that, and I appreciate the work that your, your men and women put in to make this happen, so just a comment to commend you on how things worked yesterday, thank you.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate it, Tom, and I was hoping maybe it'd be a weatherman too for us, and give us a little better forecast, as we were really assuming mostly rain with about a half inch of snow, but it really, in some areas of the city, we got probably six, six and a half inches, so, thank you, yeah, they did a pretty good job, and we'll continue to work towards improvement, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paddock. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Moving on. I'm sorry, was that a comment?
So, thank you.
Okay. Moving down to RL 21-01, Ms. Myers, are you here?
Yes, I am here, I'm requesting the authorization to forego the 467 and 457C renewal applications, which are actually the age exemption application and the disability application for this year, and use last year's percentages to, for this year. The, the Verco has authorized executive order to do this, to keep the elderly and people who have health issues at home and would not have to come in to fill that stuff out. Most of their incomes do not change, but if there are some, then I will make sure to get ahold of them to check their income.
Any comments or questions?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President, Happy New Year to you too. My question that I, I meant to ask for the previous legislation additionally is, could you just explain why this is expedited, please?
What do you mean?
Well, it's actually, I'm looking at the packet now, and the, the piece, the actual RL doesn't say expedited, but in the agenda, it has a star next to it.
Right.
Is that a typo?
All the exemptions are due by March 1st, so we would have already sent out by January 1st all renewal applications. And since, I'm not gonna send them out, hopefully, I can send an alternate letter, so these people can be warned what is taking place, so they won't be worried and calling or trying to get into the building.
Okay, great, thank you for clarifying, oh.
The, the state requires the legislative body to do this, so obviously, we want to do it as quickly as possible, so the assessor can get the information out to the people that it's intended to benefit.
Okay, great, thank you for the clarification.
Any more questions? All right, so moving on to Chuck Shager, are you here?
Yes, I am. The 041 is moving money to cover the unemployment that we've expended so far, and expect to spend in the coming month related to people that are collecting unemployment through the city's account. We're looking to move a hundred thousand dollars on the police school guards' account to the unemployment insurance account. An example is the third quarter on insurance number was roughly seventy-eight thousand dollars. We anticipate that to be significantly less in the fourth quarter, but we don't have that number yet.
Any questions? Okay.
Um, yes, sorry, this is Councilwoman Friedman. Thank you, Madam President, um, Happy New Year to you too, as well. My question is that a hundred thousand dollars seems like a lot of money to take from one place, I'm wondering how, how this money became available in this budget line?
The school guards did not work very much this year because of the schools being at home. So that, that's why the money wasn't spent.
Okay, and my other question is, my favorite question, why, can you explain why this is expedited, please?
As with all these budget amendments, they're related to bills that are gonna be coming up to be due for payment. We don't know exactly what these numbers are gonna be, or where, where the money could come from until late in the year.
I see, okay, so anything having to do with the 2020 budget needs to be expedited to meet the deadline, because it's now 2021.
To assist in making sure that everything gets paid properly, like, I may get the unemployment number next week to pay, if I have to hold that for another week or two. It's, is it a big deal? No, but it would be nice to get the money back to the state, to pay a bill that we owe them. They understand the state's already paid these people since October, November, and December, then they'll send us a bill in early January to be paid if we hold that up until this gets, if it was to get passed on January 20th, we wouldn't be able to pay the bill until probably the end of January. So it's basically to pay the bill in a timely fashion.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Councilwoman Riley, is there?
Yes, thank you, Council President, this is Councilwoman Riley, I was going to ask the question you started to explain a bit, Chuck, so we are estimating, you said, a little over seventy-four thousand for the quarter three unemployment, and you suggest, or you're thinking that it will be lower for the quarter four unemployment. Do we have enough money to cover both quarters, or will this hundred thousand cover the bills that will, are forthcoming?
Councilwoman Riley, the seventy-four thousand dollars for the third quarter is a factual bill that we've already paid, okay, I know we're late. The twenty-six thousand is what I estimate the fourth quarter will be, based off of the people that were on there that will continue to be on there, where the seventy-four thousand was high, because we've had a lot of people still on furlough from the city, those people came off the first week in October. So we won't have them the whole time, but we would, still had other people, like school guards, okay, they, they were collecting unemployment, they will continue to collect it through the fourth quarter. So it is an estimate, I don't know what the real number is, but it's the best estimate that I could come up with.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
I have, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President, yeah, Chuck, when, when it comes to the unemployment, so our city employees, they get it from the state, I mean, how much of, how much of the unemployment do we pay of their unemployment, if they're getting it from the state, and then the state charges us?
They're getting their share, and I don't know exactly what it is, I think the maximum is like four hundred and ten dollars that we're responsible for. The extra amount we're not responsible for, that the federal government's paying.
So we're responsible, that's a week that we're paying?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay. Moving on, RL 1-1-0-5.
This is a ordinance for the vital clerks' budget for Personnel Services, when we budget money, we budget it based off of 26 pays. The actual pay period this year is actually 26 pays plus fourteen days for accrual purposes. This, most accounts I've been able to handle either under my 2,500, or that people being, having people out during the year, leaving, retiring. We have numbers to cover, but for the vital department, I'm short five hundred and forty dollars, and I'm gonna take that from the mayor's travel and training line to pay for that. And since it's coming out of a different organization number, we have to bring it to a council, there's no other money in the, the vital department to cover that five hundred and forty dollars.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Shager, let's get going, RL 1-0-7.
1-0-7 is to amend the 2021 HUD administration budget. This is to bring on the person that does the HUD administration for the COVID money back onto the payroll, it's gonna be reimbursed through the COVID money, we had a COVID administration line set up to pay the city to do this, and this is just increasing the revenue line the city's gonna get, and increase the wages to this individual, along with the social security portion will have to pay. The maximum social security, and everything here is, we put thirty-five thousand dollars in plus twenty-seven, or twenty-six seventy-eight for social security as the maximum amount for the year, we don't, hopefully, it's not that much, but at this point, we don't know.
Any questions? Thank you, let's move on.
Yes, this is, this is Councilwoman Riley.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yes, thank you, Council President, resonating, hi Chuck, this is Angela again, Angela, Councilwoman Riley. Just for clarification, for those that may not have known, you explained that this is a temporary position, correct?
Correct, one hundred percent, it's a part-time position, that may work some weeks, five, ten hours, other weeks he may work twenty-five hours, depending on what the workload is for the COVID stuff.
So it is a temporary, at most six months, position that we will be hiring someone for, is that my, is that correct?
Well, I'm gonna say hopefully, Councilwoman Riley, but, I mean, we don't know what's gonna happen with COVID. You know, if COVID clears up and we, this money gets all spent, we don't have any more money, it may be gone in four months, it may take nine months to do it, I don't know.
Okay, so just for clarification, we're not amending a position that's already in existence, so for example, if someone is interested in applying for this forty-five dollar an hour job, it will be posted?
No, it will not be posted, he, he's had this position before with us. The, the person that's doing this did this for us in 2020. We're gonna bring him back to do it in 2021.
Okay. So now, just from my clarification, is this person now a city employee, or we're bringing someone back?
We're bringing somebody back, he is currently not a city employee.
Okay, okay, thank you for this clarification.
Sorry, I didn't clarify that earlier in those emails with you, Angela.
Any other questions?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam President, um, I, I also just want to clarify, is the hourly rate the same as it was last year, forty-five dollars an hour?
Yes.
Okay.
Viva, as I clarified with Councilman Riley before, this person does not, because he's part-time, he doesn't get any paid time off benefits, vacation, sick time, PL time, he doesn't get, he doesn't qualify for any health insurance or retirement benefits through the city, the only thing that we pay for is, is wages, his flight cost, and a very minimal amount of workers' count.
Any other questions?
This is Councilwoman Riley, once again, I'm not gonna beat a dead horse, Mr. Shager, but what is the term that is in the contract for this employee? What, what was defined as his term for signing on to this role?
There was no period of time saying one month, or six months, or anything like that, it was, there was no time period put on it, the maximum right now is thirty-five thousand dollars. If we were to go over that, we'd have to come back to council. Which I think is like seven hundred and seventy-five hours.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Shager, let's move on to RL 1-1-0-8.
Find that one here. Okay, twenty-one-oh.
Six.
I'm not sure if everyone's aware, but I have someone in my office that's leaving us at the end of January, who's retiring, a position was created, or the person who's gonna fill that position is coming from my department also, and that position's gonna be filled with another position. Okay, so what we're basically doing is the payroll supervisor is going to become the new city purchasing agent at the end of January. I wanna defund that position as a payroll supervisor, and fill this with a payroll specialist at a lower salary, I think I talked about this in December, that we did it for the end of the year. The difference in this salary of five thousand two hundred and ten dollars, I wanna move into a temporary service line in my department to bring someone on to work to assist us. to assist us until I can backfill the payroll specialist old position. I have a payroll assistant position that's open now. And I would like to have someone come in here and assist me until I can backfill that position. Does that make sense, everybody?
Yes, it makes sense to me.
No questions? Okay. Let's move on to RL 21-09.
There really should be two RLs here, okay? We have, I sent our bond council asking them to put up together a bond ordinance. The first one is a bond ordinance for the 2021 projects, which I emailed everybody today. And I don't have it right in front of me. It's like 6 million some dollars. These are all the projects that you approved in the 2021 budget, such as road reconstruction, water lines, sewer lines. I think there's some parking ramp stuff. There's some city hall improvement lines and ADA ramps, I think are all of them. So that would be one bond ordinance that I have not received it yet from bond council for that information. Actually, as we're talking, I just did get it. So I will send that out to everybody here very shortly. The other one is to amend the fire station bond ordinance. Where last year, we did a bond ordinance and I believe it was for $800,000 to do the design on the fire station. I'm now asking for additional money to do the construction of that fire station. Bringing the total bond ordinance up to, I think, $8.5 million, which is the 7.7 million for the construction plus $800,000 for the original design. I'm not sure if Lee sent that one out. But I did get that one on Thursday. But you'll have both of these tomorrow morning. And I'm not asking to expedite any of the bond ordinances, assess to go through the normal criteria that we normally have to do. Lee, Ken, you want to talk about the legal things we have to do for bond ordinances?
The city council usually has a public hearing. So at the meeting on Wednesday, you'd probably schedule a public hearing or your meeting on the 20th. And it has to be, if I remember correctly, approved by a two-thirds majority, so five out of seven.
So Lee, there should be two ordinances out here. One for the amending the 2020 fire station bond ordinance. And the second one being to approve the 2021 bond ordinance, which I will send everybody as we end this meeting.
Yes, okay.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Shager.
Yeah, excuse me, sorry, I do have a question.
That's all right. Go ahead, Councilwoman Burns.
Thank you, Madam President. So Chuck, this is for the construction of the fire station, right?
Correct.
So that changed after they did the design, they decided that they didn't have enough money for the construction? I mean, we haven't started construction, so I'm just wondering, how is it that suddenly we're putting more money into it rather than trying to build it and then seeing where we are? I don't know. Where does that money, is that the designers that are requesting the money, the construction people? Where did, who's saying that we didn't have enough?
Well, when we did the original bond ordinance, we only did it for the design portion of $800,000. Okay, so to do the construction later this year, we're estimating it to be 7.7 million. So once this thing, the timeframe of getting bond ordinances through, I will not be able to get this money until April, at the earliest, early April. But I will need to start filling out all the paperwork necessary to get the money in April come February.
Right. When we talked before, we, you were, at city council, you were saying that we were up to, I forget, it was 75% of our bonding capability or something? Was this included in that or is this now adding to that?
I will send you the estimate, Councilwoman Burns. I don't have it right here in front of me, but it is less than, it's, we're in the low 70%, which should include all those numbers.
That's what I'm wondering, if that, when we were talking about what we bonded and what we.
I will send that out to everybody.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chuck. So moving on to RL 21-010 with our Mayor Jared Cram. Jared, are you there?
Good evening, City Council. Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Okay. This is an RL, a city council has done two previously allocating small business assistance funding for our CARES Act. This was done at the last meeting in December. And this time around, we've got another round of businesses that have provided the Office of Economic Recovery the necessary paperwork. And these are not to exceed numbers for the small businesses included on the attachment. So these will continue to come down for the small businesses. We had a lot of applicants and it is taking each of them time to compile all the necessary paperwork, have it vetted, and each of these will go through city council.
Any questions?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Friedman.
Thank you, Madam President. Happy New Year, Jared. I am wondering how much money is still left of this that's available for small businesses to apply for?
So I can find that out exactly, but as of right now, we don't have any scheduled new rounds of applications because the number of applications that we received and given the number, the amounts that each small business was eligible for based on their employment numbers would satisfy the entirety that we've currently had budgeted. But I can get a breakdown of what city council has authorized versus, you know, how much has been budgeted previously for this?
Okay, because if I remember correctly, the, I seem to remember that last meeting we, that we authorized money to small businesses. I think I'm under the impression that, that at that point, all of the money was accounted for, right? Or am I misremembering that?
Yeah, so it may be that we have applicants that have applied and we have their paperwork in. But just because someone has filled out the initial application and they'd be eligible for the money, they still have to go through a process with providing backup, other documentation. Once that happens, we then take it to city council and actually authorize the city to send up the checks. So we have other businesses that have applied that we are still, the city waiting on further documentation. As soon as we get that in, we will take it to city council and authorize the expenditure of money. So, yep, in the latest round, there's 885,000 available for COVID small business assistance. Here tonight, we're giving 20,500 in COVID assistance. At the last meeting, it was a little bit more than that. So eventually, that 185,000 will deplete as finalized documents get in.
I see. Okay, so at the last meeting, there were enough applications to cover the remaining funds, but some of those applications were not approved. Am I understanding correctly?
That's correct. And, you know, probably at every city council meeting over the next few months, we will have another, you know, either a handful or half a dozen businesses that have now met their documentation requirements. And those will be sent to city council for approval.
All right, I got you. Thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Riley. Just, hi, thank you again. Just for clarification now, the person we discussed earlier, the person being brought in for the COVID funds, will they be assisting with the application processes for the residents and the businesses as well? I know this may not be your question, Jared, but if you can.
Yeah, so the, as was announced, I think it was kind of back in April, the Office of Economic Recovery is assisting with receiving those, the applications, vetting them, and also working with the small businesses to make sure that they get complete applications in. So that office is who I'm working with.
No, 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 I was asking about this new, this employee we were bringing on to assist with the COVID process. Yes, we are aware of the recovery team, but is this person going on to that team to assist with the processes? Or is that a different?
Jared, let me answer. Councilwoman Riley, 100%, that's what he's, his main focus is totally this. I'm going to say 95% of his work goes towards this.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Chuck.
Any other questions? Okay, so with that, we're moving on to pending legislation.
Yes, we just have one rollover from last meeting, RL 20-249. It's amending the 2021 budget for DPW.
Okay, do we have any comments or questions? I guess then with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Congratulations on a successful first meeting, Madam President.
Absolutely. Congratulations, Sophia.
Thank you.